All right, it's time. All right. Thank you for coming, and at this time I'd like to call to order the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. And we always like to start our meetings out with an invocation and pledge allegiance. Today, our invocation will be given by Deacon Rob Goodman with the St. George Catholic Church. And our pledge allegiance will be given by our own Nicole Philshy. Please.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, Lord of love and life, during this time of year when we celebrate your revelation that all of creation is created by you and imbued with your spirit, we give thanks for the new life you give us today and every day through our encounters with one another. We pray as one for a blessing on all Washington County commissioners and all those who work with the commissioners. Bless them with vision for the county that includes all residents and visitors. Bless them with guidance as they make decisions that work for the betterment of the common good. Bless them with the wisdom for fulfill their responsibilities with integrity. And bless them with a gift of servant leadership if they may set an example of good governance. And bless them with a heart for those among us who have less. They will not forget the poor, the mentally and physically challenged, and all of those who, for whatever reason, live on the margins of our society. Grant all of us who live in and care for Washington County peace and joy this day and the desire to pass on that peace and joy to our neighbor. All of this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All rise and I'll make the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We always start our meeting out with the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's anybody who'd like to pull anything out, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of approval, audit-approved claims for payment for November 21st, 2018 through December 4th, 2018. Consideration of public hearing minutes of November 13th, 2018, and working minutes November 20th, 2018. A consideration of administrative adjustments of real property. Consideration of administrative adjustments of personal property. And consideration of application for property tax abatements. Consideration, item F, which is consideration of Washington County holiday schedule for 2019. G, consideration for regular commission meeting schedule for 2019. H, acknowledgement of the publishing notice, adoption of ordinance number 2018-1121-0 and ordinance 2018-1125-0, published Saturday, November 24th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I would second Commissioner Iverson's motion.
The motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. For item number one, which is an election information presented by our clerk auditor, Kim Hayden.
Who is also clerk auditor of the year.
They rescinded that. So, in last commission meeting, we presented, our office presented the canvas results for the 2018 election. And at that time, I'd given my opinion that the tie vote in Bergen meant that the board should have won. I was relying on information that I'd received, and that was not the case. But, all I'm here for is to tell you that that is their call. That wasn't part of the canvas. My opinion wasn't part of the canvas. It's really Bergen's call, how they interpret the code. So that's really up to the mayor and town council and their legal people. I just make sure that that wasn't part of what you approved as part of the canvas. So, we've kind of moved on from that. There wasn't a request for a recount or anything, so it's safe that we will want it, but one.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Item number two is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. And I have to read this big, long document verbatim, so please be patient. Sorry. I, Chairman Renshaw, hereby open the first public hearing for the CDBG program. This hearing is being called to consider potential projects for which funding may be applied or under the 2019 Community Development Block Grant funding cycle. The grant money must be spent on projects benefiting preliminary low and moderate incomes persons. The five-county association of government, in which Washington County is a member, is expecting to receive an approximately $813,000 in this new program year. All eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDBG application policies, procedures, and manuals. And interested persons can review it at any time. Eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDBG application policies and procedure manuals. And interested persons can review it at any time. Eligible activities that include examples such as construction of public works and facilities, water and sewer lines, fire station acquisition of real property, provisions of public services such as food banks and the homeless shelters. In the past, Washington County has received 22 grants for projects such as ADA improvements and public buildings. The Enterprise Senior Center, water planning for Gunlock Special Service District, the Senior Center Mills on Wheels Vehicles, and the Gunlock Fire Stations for the Northwest Special Service District. A complete list of the CDBG project funding for Washington County can be found on the five-county AOG website. The county has handed out its capital investment plan as part of the regional consolidation plan. This list shows which projects the county has identified as being needed in the community. Anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions during the hearing, please come to the podium and identify yourself by name before speaking. The clerk will include your name in the minutes, and we would like to specifically respond to your questions and suggestions during the hearing. So this time, it is a public hearing. The public's invited to come forward, like it says, and to make a comment if they'd like. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We close the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant for 2019.
I will second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm just curious, why you had to read that verbatim?
The attorney's handed it to me and said, "Read it verbatim." And you never question a good attorney. All right, moving on to item number three is consideration of purchase request by the clerk auditor of the office and Roy Boyer. Boyer's here.
It's Boyer.
Boyer, I know.
I'll help you.
He works for the auditor of the year. Kim Hayden.
He's a good auditor.
He is a good.
He's great.
Okay, so purchase requisitions. The first one is for tourism and its co-funding for ski and parks in the total of $15,000. The next one is for Tourism Again for advertising for sports and rec for, in the total of $170,880. For Legacy Park, there is to do some updating and new sand on the horse track in a total of $65,525. Oh, that also includes the machinery to be able to do that. The next one is for RFID tags for the library. It's their tracking system for their books. And that is a total of $12,625. The next few are for the sheriff's office. The first one is for truck lease payments for seven vehicles in a total of $14,000. The next one is for a power gate for the new community building in the total of $28,541 and 44 cents.
I see that was changed to $14,000, that's six units, seven units, yeah?
Yeah, that's what changed the amount, because it went from six to seven.
Make a correction.
Sorry. And then the, I don't remember if I said the amount for the gate. It's $28,541 and 44 cents. And the final one is, it's not over the $10,000 amount, but it's for gift cards for the Shop With a Cop program in a total of $4,500. And it was thought appropriate to get commissioner approval on that. And unless there's any questions?
Yeah, Brock, could you come up and kind of explain what's happening on the gift card there? Just so that everybody knows what actually we're doing right here.
Sure, so initially, we had come forward and asked for the gift cards for 60. Gift cards help 60 kids. Target has come forward and wanted to donate an additional $5,000 towards it so that we can actually help 90 this year, which is awesome. There was an agreement between them and St. George Police that they were just going to take care of that between them so we wouldn't have to go through the county fund. There was a hiccup there, and they issued a check for the $5,000 which did come into the county fund. So, to be compliant with the policy of the county, we need to come forward and say, "We need to get those additional 30 cards to help those kids." So that money has come into the account, and we will just use that to buy the cards.
And so the donation is actually the source of funds for this card. Thank you for that explanation.
That's great that Target would do that.
It is.
It's awesome.
Yeah. So, I take my kids out to the Shop With a Cop to help make breakfast. It is one of the neatest events I've been to as a commissioner, to see those kids. And so, that's a great program.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, with those explanations, I would make a motion that we approve the purchase requisitions as presented by our purchasing agent, Ray Boyer.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number five is consideration of capital improvements listed for 2019, which is the one-year action plan and a five-year strategic plan for projects.
I think we missed number four. Consideration of
Oh, yep, you're right.
Update of Washington County employment.
Yep, thank you for that correction. Okay, item four is consideration of an update to the Washington County Employee Policy and Procedure Manual regarding retirement and clean air policy.
Erica's asking me to speak on that.
Please.
So, there's those two changes that were made. The first change was that we
You might pull your mic over so that you can hear me better. Get on the recording.
Okay, so the first change is that we revamped our clean air policy to comply with the state's policy that says no vaping within 25 building. And so I think we just redefined and that policy. And then the second change that we made was for new employees that they're going to automatically have a 5% of their paycheck go into a 401K. And they can decide if they don't want to do that amount. If they want to do more or less, they can do it, but that's going to be the default. And starting in 2019.
So the default will be to enroll them, but if they want more, or less, or none, they can change that.
Excellent. I think it's a good thing.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt the Washington County Employment Policy Manual Update regarding retirement and clean air.
Right. And, right. I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Consideration of Capital Improvements List, the CIP, for 2019, a one-year action plan and a five-year strategy plan for projects.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to talk about the Capital Improvement List. We're asked to submit this list every year. And we're also asked to rank in the low, medium, and high kind of based on our anticipated time of need that we might actually need funding for these different projects. Our list starts out with the County Administration Building. That's at a medium, one-year look. And with anticipated that we may need that by 2023 for $25 million. The county also does this on behalf of special service districts in the county as a sponsoring entity. And so the Gunlock Special Service District handles their culinary water system and issues that is, wants to be on the list with medium priority for $770,000. We continue to carry on our list with a low priority, Little Valley Branch Library of the Washington County Library System. We're all aware that a lot of growth is happening out in that area. It's the fastest-growing area, I think, in the county right now. And that is a $2.5 million estimated cost. And the Washington County-St. George Interlocal Agency with Dixie Center. Dixie Center bonds are almost paid off, but by the time you pay off a 20-year project, it's time to remodel and update. So, we've got $9 million there for a low priority 2023 date. And our final item on the list is the Enterprise Senior Center remodel. We don't have an estimate of that cost yet, but not before 2023. And so I would propose that we adopt the Capital Improvement List and as presented so that we can turn that in.
And I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number six is consideration of ratification of the CCJJ RSAT 2018-2019 Grant for Subsistence Abuse Treatment in the Purgatory Correction Facility. Is Charmaine here? Please come forward.
Aye.
Yeah. I'm just a big guy.
I just came flying in. Thank you, commissioners. This ratification and adjustment is basically a 2018 grant. The R-2018 grant is going to be subsequent to the 2016 that we've already been awarded to continue efforts for the, while individuals are incarcerated, to have treatment already initiated and then transition out into the community. And thank you for your expedited move on this, because there was a deadline. And I was notified about 11 days ago to be able to submit this into the state. And they've been very supportive. And as our stat's been doubled in their grant amount for the state of Utah, they really have put a lot of effort into Washington County and trying to make some things happen. So, thank you for your support.
I would like to mention that this does have a portion of money that the county has to put in towards it, but we'd already appropriated that money. It was already in the budget to be there. So this grant won't require any additional funding from the county.
It does not change our proposed budget.
Correctly.
No, and generally, those, the cash match is a portion of my salary that's already existing for my donated time.
I think part of the reason that we're wanting to ratify this is because this was a time-exigent document that was signed. And so, even though we are going through the regular budgeting process like that, this ratification, that signature's affirmed by this body.
And just sheer transparency.
That's right. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to support ratification of the CCJJ RSAT 2008-2019 Grant for Subsistence Abuse Treatment in the Purgatory Correctional Facility. And thank Charmaine for her explanation.
Sure. Thank you, John.
And I will second that motion, and thank you, Charmaine.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven is consideration of ordinance number 2018-1126-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Leeds from A20 Agriculture to RE20, whose residential estate, 20 square foot minimum lot size, hereafter fully described in this ordinance. Scott, you're already there.
Yep.
Good job.
So, just outside of the Leeds boundary in Silver Valley Estates, just up on the hill, up from the cemetery, there's a single parcel that was kind of in between. There's the gentlemen that are developing what was called Cemetery Hill subdivision. And they've been doing some of that excavating there. Yes. So there's a single lot right next to it that was just kind of a remnant between the two subdivisions that was zoned A20. And the Hardmans purchased the property, and they're wanting to build a home on it. And so to bring that into zoning compliance, needed to rezon it. Reason why we went with the RE20 is because of the frontage requirements of the RE20 zone allowed for the size lot that it was. And so it was reviewed by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission didn't have any problems with it. And so they unanimously recommended approval of it to the county commission.
Do you have the hearing as well?
Yes, we did.
And did anybody speak for or against it?
No. No one spoke for or against it.
That fits into the existing zone right next to it.
Yeah, it's similar zone.
Similar zone. Very good. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2018-1126-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Leeds from A20 Agricultural 20-acre minimum lot size, zone, to zone R20 residential estate, 20,000 square feet, minimal lot size, zone hereafter fully described in this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. Motion to rezon this to RE20.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Number eight, consideration of ordinance number 2018-1127-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Central from A20, which is agricultural 20-acre minimum lot size zone, to C3, which is a general commercial zone, hereafter fully described in this ordinance.
Okay, so the Grays owned some property right on the corner of the highway and Center Street in Central. And a couple of years ago, they chunked out a piece of land that they weren't able to farm, and they developed it. They rezoned it to commercial. And they are running, sorry about that, I silenced my phone, but not my watch. They rezoned the property to commercial, and they have a storage facility on the property. And it has been working really well. And so they want to, and they have a need to expand the storage facility. If you look at the map that was attached, it's kind of a funny-looking lot. And so just to answer the questions, why that lot is that shape, there's a drainage that goes through the, they own all that ag that's all around it. And so they wanted to just not include any of that drainage in this commercial zone. And so that's why the, there's the not ideal-shaped parcel, but it works for what they're wanting to do. And so they requested to rezon it to commercial, C3, so they could have more storage. Held the public hearing, there was no one that spoke for or against it. And Planning Commission recommended approval of it.
Thanks for that explanation, because that was my question.
Yeah.
I would have preferred to just draw the line straight across and do what they want with the drainage. But, Mr. Chairman, based on the explanation of Scott and the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I would make a motion in support of ordinance number 2018-1127-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near Central from A20 Agricultural 20-acre minimum lot size zone to the C3 General Commercial Zone, hereafter fully described in this ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number nine, consideration of ordinance number 2018-1128-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near New Harmony from PD, which is a planned development zone, to RE2.5, which is a residential 2,000-square-foot minimum lot size zone hereafter fully described in this ordinance. Scott?
Okay, so just to orient yourselves, there's the old Highway 144 exit. That's right where the gas station is, just near New Harmony. So just to the east, sorry, to the west of that gas station, there is this four-acre parcel of land that was rezoned to PD several years ago. And then the project, nothing ever happened with it. The applicants on this are the current owner and the future owner. Rex Lang is going to purchase it from Penny Weston. And what he is wanting to do is to just build a single-family home on the property. And it was, felt like the best thing to do would be to rezon it and get it out of the PD ordinance and not having to meet, the PD zone and not having to meet the PD ordinance. And so we have a rezon request for that. And the public hearing was held by the Planning Commission in the last meeting, and they recommend approval.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2018.
I'll, wait a second, I just had a question on how large that parcel actually was.
Okay, so the parcel's about four acres in size. I know that there's Yeah, it's bigger than the 2.5. And that, the reason why we went with the 2.5 was again, some of the frontage is kind of a funny-looking little, almost looks like West Virginia or something.
Yeah.
Funny little shaped lot. With the original plan that came in on that, or that PD that was there, there were, it was kind of a mess, but there were like 11 septic tanks on that parcel. And so going to one, even though it's smaller than generally what they like to have, the health departments are happy with this. Thanks.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County near New Harmony from PUD, or PD, Planned Development Zone, to R2.5 Residential Estate, 20,000 square, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size zone hereafter fully described in this ordinance.
I would second that motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate. Item number 10 is consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2396, a resolution reappointing board members to the Southwest Regional Response and Coordination Team. And Pete?
Pete, while you're coming up, maybe you could just explain to us what the Southwest Regional Response Team is and what you do.
The Southwest Regional Response Team is an organization of the five counties in southwestern Utah that works at using funds supplied by the federal government to develop resources to address emergencies, terrorism, and other issues in Washington County by the development of teams that can be deployed both locally and nationally. In the last seven years, we have enhanced the hazmat response teams for our region. Have three technical response teams along with operational support in most of the counties. We also have developed confined space rescue and building collapse rescue and swiftwater rescue resources to fill gaps where those resources were needed within the five-county region. Board consists of two members from each county. Washington County has a third, because we currently have the chairman. Proposal is that we reappoint Lynn Axel, who's a member of the board, point Darren Emley from St. George City to replace Ken Gard, who's been sitting there on the board, and replacing me with Jason Whipple from our
Who'll be the chair? Will they just elect chair at their next meeting?
They'll select another chair, yeah.
I'd like to recognize Pete Coleman for many years, and I'm thinking nine or 10 almost now, as
Close.
Pretty close, as the leader of Southwest Regional Response Team. And these board members, I've known them, they've been involved for many years. Darren, how long for you in the fire service in St. George and hazmat team?
I can't even remember when the first hazmat team, me and Jason went through that class.
I'm thinking it would be 2005 or '06, something in that area when that was put together.
I think it was before, 2004, 2003, somewhere around there.
Anyway, I nod my head, and the Washington County Commission would like to extend our appreciation to each of you, and especially to Pete for his many years of service. And I would make a motion, now that you've given us those names, that we accept the names Jason Whipple and Darren Emley and Lynn Axel as Washington County's representatives to the Southwest Regional Response Team Governing Board.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Item number Item number 11, consideration of resolution number R-2018-2399. A resolution appointing members to the Washington County Water Conservancy District, Washington County District Board of Trustees. And due to my transferring up there, I am going to recruise myself from this item. It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to speak to this and Victor will probably, Commissioner Iverson will probably want to speak to it as well. But the Water Conservancy District Board is integral to the well-being, economic, financial, in all aspects, health, safety, for the well-being of Washington County. And so this is a responsibility that I take very, very seriously and I know that all of us do. And as Washington County continues to grow and we're currently the fastest growing metro area in the nation, much of our growth, I think fully half of it, is indigenous growth from our, our children and self-sustaining growth. It's not the external in-migration, which is also a big player. But this puts a huge burden and responsibility on the Conservancy District Board to supervise and adequately ensure the availability of water and doing that cost-effectively. I think they've done a superb job of that. And we've received applications. We've had a chance to review them. Had many, many qualified applicants apply. I will be one of the first to say that I have a great deference to individuals who are elected by the residents they represent to represent them on this important board. And with that, I would like to place in the nomination and in support of the resolution 2018-2399, the following names. Mayor Ken Nielsen from Washington, Mayor John Pike, City of St. George. Ed Bowler, representing the agricultural water users of the county and a position that's mandated by state statute that we have someone representing agricultural water users. And Commissioner Victor Iverson to offer representation for all other areas of the county. He's a countywide elected official. And I think it's important that residents in our small communities and other areas of the county have someone who is elected that can stand for them on that board. That would be my motion.
And I'll second that motion. I would like to note, adding to what Commissioner Cox has said about the importance of the water district. Because it bears the name Washington County, a lot of people automatically believe that it's, it's a department of the county. But it's really not. It's a special service district. It's been set up in the 1950s through a court action and then later through, through state statute and legislation. But since the time that I've become a commissioner over the last four years, we've dramatically moved the board towards more of elected officials for the very reason that they're the ones, the cities are the purchasers of the water. The district is a wholesale provider of water. This also allows for our citizens to have the representation on this board and this makeup. I believe it's a good move. It's a move that we've, we've done kind of as a part of our policy or thought process would be a better word for that. And I've seconded that motion, so.
All right. So even though I'm recruiting myself from the vote, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 There was two ayes. The motion passes. Good to have you up there.
Not sure what you've talked me into. No, water is so important.
Item number 12, consideration of resolution number R-2018-2400. A resolution appointing board members to the RAP dis-
Disbursement.
Man, I can't talk. Advisory Board. And Commissioner Iverson, you've obviously-
Oh, very good. This is a, the RAP, Art, Recreation Arts and Park Tax was passed by the, by the voters. Now it's been three years, right, Kim? And a portion of that, so a lot of people sometimes are, you know, they, in order to explain it, most of that goes automatically back to the cities and based on population and point of sale. That's a little over 80%. And most of that is the, the money that's dedicated to recreation and parks. And the arts portion, 15%, is held in reserve here or is set aside here at the county. And, and there's a board to administer it and that is what the RAP board deals with. They process those applications for people apply to and, and pass it on to the County Commission.
Make a recommendation.
Then make, they're recommending board to the County Commission. And it has always amazed me, the great applicants that we have, and this year is no different. The members that we're putting forward after interviewing and deliberating. Richard Kohler, Diamond McPherson, Tony Allen, and Carol Lakin. Four members that we, with terms expiring on December 31st, 2020. So 2022, sorry, stuttering.
And I'm happy to second the motion for the aforementioned.
I have a motion and a second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Those, those are good individuals. They'll do a great job. Item number 13 is consideration of resolution number R-2018-210. A resolution approving a 2019 cooperative agreement between Washington County and Utah State University Extension Services. And Commissioner Iverson, you've kind of taken the lead on this. Would you please speak to it?
I was expecting Paul to be here.
I did too, but I don't see him out there, so.
This is, every year though, we, we do an agreement with, with USU Cooperative Services, our extension service. And I'll tell you what, we're really blessed here. I mean, Paul is an excellent director of staff. We have some great people over there working with him. I think they are just, they're trying all the time to, to provide a quality impact back into our community and we appreciate that. And this is the agreement that we have for this year, so.
What I really like about all of this and what under Professor Hill's supervision that we've seen is a lot of diversification. It's just your standard 4H thing, robotics, technology and working with us on economic development. I think the partnership with Utah State University is outstanding. And I'm really excited that we've got them in the draft building.
It is. It's a great-
It's right smack in the middle of the county. Some things it may not be perfect, but for other things, you just couldn't make it any better either. And so, but it's a beautiful building and a beautiful facility, great partnership.
And just to add to that, getting back to kind of the staff and the people that we have working with it, it just shows how a great program, once it's managed by great people and great staff, can do great things in the community. I do have other counties that I visit with that sometimes question their partnership with extension and whether they're getting the value that they expect out of it. And we just constantly getting a great partnership here, so can't say enough good. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we pass resolution R-2018-2401. A resolution approving 2019 cooperative agreement between Washington County and Utah State University Extension Services.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number 14 is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2402. A resolution approving Cactus Communications, Inc. Marketing Services Agreement. And Kevin, please come forward and-
Glad to be here to kind of hit this over the fence at the end of the meeting, right? Thanks commissioners. So this marketing services agreement is really just a, we, we vetted out an advertising agency and have a resolution to work with Cactus. Now this is the service agreement that explains how that working relationship is going to work. And it just sort of outlines, as we go forward, they will provide a scope of work, bit pricing, all of the details that we'll sign off on as we, as we work through the various projects in the year. And then how that'll be invoiced monthly and so forth. Who owns the work? All of that's defined in the-
So when will you be meeting with them and getting this all?
Yeah, so we've actually started with some phone conferences since, since moving forward. And then they will come in for their real first big thrust in the work at first part of January where they'll be here for three or four days and interviewing stakeholders and working back, kind of going backwards and doing a strategic and brand audit is the first part of the work that we'll be doing. But this, yeah, this agreement again is sort of that high level, this is the working relationship and how we're going to communicate and act.
Super. Kevin, I've had a chance to visit with you about this and, and kind of watch the progress of this agreement and the RFP where this company was selected. I'm excited by it. I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, in support of resolution R-2018-2402. A resolution approving Cactus Communications, Inc. Marketing Services Agreement.
I'll second that motion.
I really like, when I got this contract, the one thing I was most concerned about is that the county owns all the work product. And it says that very clearly, so that's great. So we have a motion and a second all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Item number 15, consideration of resolution number R-2018-2403. A resolution requesting the transfer of property from the state, state of Utah to the county for use by Washington County Court Support Services. And I'll go ahead. I've been kind of working with Brock Belnapp on this. There's a building just a few blocks from here that the state of Utah has used for juvenile purposes. Due to some changes in the law, the state of Utah has not been utilizing the building for quite a while now. Where this building is actually located, it was on land that was owned by Washington County. And Washington County gave the state of Utah the land. Now that they're not utilizing this, this building anymore, there's the land. We're just making a request to the state of Utah to get that back. Or in the alternative, and I'd be happy to get both of your input on this, is if, if the state of Utah is not inclined to, to return it back to the county, at least give us a long-term, low-cost lease on the building. I, I think that would be appropriate too. So either way, so I would almost like to, well, I would make a motion to, that we amend the proposed resolution to include that option to, of a long-term lease.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership on this. I mentioned too, that this property that we're talking about was actually donated to the state by the county. And so I think a low-cost lease is appropriate. And, and seeing that building get used again for a very productive, beneficial purpose of helping people stay out of jail and gain the life skills they need to remain employed and be mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters, bringing families together. I think nothing more important than that. And I like the inclusion of lease option. I think that beggars can't be choosers.
That's true.
And so I would like to second your motion.
Chairman, can I just clarify, is that okay that we also put that in the title of this resolution? Is it just to say either or?
I'm good with that if you're, yeah, so we'll just, now that you-
I would leave that actually to the attorney and, and the administrator to work that language out so that either option viable.
And I mean, essentially it's just, we're just making an ask.
That's what it is.
That's all it is at this time.
It's about a 25-page ask.
Before we asked, we did go look at the building. And that's why we-
Yeah, we didn't want them to give us junk or anything.
So we, we have a motion and a second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 16 is a Commissioner's report.
Commissioner, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes.
So it's been brought to my attention there might be, might have been a typo on one of those zone change ordinances. Would it be appropriate for Scott to come back and just clarify that and maybe amend your motion for that?
Yes, thank you. Which item?
So it was on the last zone change, the, I believe it was Mr. Lang's zone change. Number nine, yeah, number nine.
New Harmony?
Yeah, the new harmony one. If, the zone that it was being changed to is the RE 2.5, but in the brackets there it says residential estate 20,000 square foot. So that should be residential estate 2.5 acre. And so that was included in the motion, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
All right. I believe that was our intent.
I understood it to be two and a half acres, but the, I think that's a good catch on, on that, so that clarifies it.
That was our esteemed clerk auditor.
So with our motion, was it the motion made for 2.5 acre or 20,000?
I read 20,000.
He did say 2.5, but then afterwards, because it had the language in there said 20,000.
I would like to re-clarify that. The amended motion would be to be done at RE 2.5. That'd be my motion.
A motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second all in favor say aye.
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 Sorry about that.
No, it's good to keep things nice and clean. Anything else Natalie that we messed up on? Okay. Commissioner Iverson?
Uh, nothing to report.
Commissioner?
No, I, no, we'll have one more meeting before Christmas, but I want to take the opportunity to thank all of our residents for all they do to make such a great place to live and work. And as we travel and move about, winter storms coming in, I just hope everybody will slow down and be cautious and careful and have a happy and safe holiday season.
I think half of the Wasatch Front is coming down here for Christmas, so.
I hope they listen to us.
I know. Of course, they might know how to drive better in snow than we do.
Aye.
Seeing that there's no other items on the agenda, therefore we can take no other further action, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.